Tuesday, March 9th, Board of Commissioners meeting. And at this time, I'll lead us in a word of prayer. Dear Lord, just thank you for this day and this day that you've given to us along with the other days that you've blessed us in our lives here on planet Earth. Lord, we just thank you for being with our emergency personnel, our public safety guys, our deputies EMS workers. We just thank you for all that you've done to protect these guys and here in Hart County. We just pray for our leaders of our state and our leaders of our United States here. And we just pray, Lord, that you give them the wisdom that they need to carry this country forward. And we just pray for each Commissioner here tonight and help us with to always look for you, for the wisdom to carry on the business here of Hart County. And also for our armed forces fighting for our freedoms here in this country. We just pray for these, the ones that have fought in the past and the present and the future, Lord, we just pray that you protect these guys. In your name we pray, amen. Let's all stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pleasantly read into the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I call the order of the meeting of March 9th, 2021, Board of Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to welcome each one here tonight. We thank you for being here. And the first item of business that we'll take care of is to approve the agenda.
We have one addition. Add a letter of support for House Bill 658. That's legislation about the airport authority. We can probably put that under old business if you want to, since we've discussed it before. Make it item 12D.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda with them changes.
What's the number?
12D.
Oh, the House bill number?
Yeah.
Sixty.
Six, 658. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five oh vote. All right, and the next item of business is to approve the minutes of the February the 23rd meeting. Want to get a motion to approve those?
I make a motion, we approved the T-23 minutes.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Do I have a second? Second, we got a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion?
Yeah, item 13A. We need to clarify that it's not worded right. What we did was in exchange for an additional 15 foot of right of way, we granted a variance to the 40 foot setback from 40 foot to 25 foot. Need to make sure that's clear in the minutes because down the road, somebody's going to be doing some research. And the way it's worded right now, it's not clear.
Right.
The whole intent was to keep the landowner whole.
We granted a variance of 15 foot from the setback of 40 foot.
We granted a variance to the 40 foot setback to 25 foot, to 25 foot setback, is what we did.
All right.
In exchange for 15 foot right of way.
Okay.
I'm in my motion with them changes.
Okay. Mr. Teasley amends his motion to include that. You got a second? Commissioner Bennett, you amend your second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Next on the agenda is remarks by invited guest committees. And we have Jerry McCann here from the Chamber of Commerce. Thanks.
Chairman Sayer and members of the commission. My name is Jerry McCann. As Marshall said, I currently am the chairman of the Board of Directors of the Hart County Chamber of Commerce. And we are here tonight to formally introduce you to our new executive director of the chamber. But before I do that, I did want to make a few comments about this because in January we discovered that our current executive director was going to be leaving us. She found, they found her and was offered something that she just couldn't refuse. And so we began immediately with her assistance, actually, to find a new executive director. We sent out this advertisement all over the country. We got, I think, a total of 14 applications for that position as far away as South Florida. And we actually interviewed five of those individuals in person, our executive committee did. And after a lot of deliberation that really actually didn't take that long, once we discovered that we all were in agreement that the person that we, about the person that we wanted to serve this position, the decision was made. It was a unanimous decision on the part of the executive committee. I presented that to our 12 member board and they approved it unanimously. And so tonight, I want to present to you a lady that I think is going to do a phenomenal job for us. She, this was not a requirement that we had, but she has deep roots here in Hart County. She has a passion for the chamber. She has served the chamber as an ambassador. She's served on the, on the board of directors. And so it's with great pleasure that I present to you tonight, Terry Partain.
All right.
And since the county pays a portion of her salary, you're welcome to interrogate her if you like.
Oh, no.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here. Thank y'all for having me.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very excited to begin the role.
Yeah, congratulations from the board here. And we know that your enthusiasm, your passion for Hart County and working for the people, I know you'll be a great fit for Hart County.
I think it's actually in her gene pool that she is excited about Hart County.
I won't deny that.
Good, thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is remark, I'm sorry, reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Mr. Gordon?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you. County administrators report.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. The joint meeting between Hart and Franklin has been confirmed on March 25th, 6 o'clock at the lower level of, level of the literacy center. Chairman Sayer and Chairman Franklin County got together and they have all approved these dates. So it's set for, like I said, 25th, 6 p.m. at the lower level learning center. Basically, this is the February financial report. If you'll see, the revenue, actual revenue is down below what we expect because all of most of the property taxes has been paid. The expenses was within our budgeted amount. One million, 28,660, which leaves us a monthly variance of, I'm going to look at my screen, I can't read that. monthly variance of $3,000, $3,782,971. The real profit is, again, it's the taxes. Property taxes came in at $170,000, $170,630. The law was good again at $248,217. EMS fees are still low. We have filled that position. And as of today, since Monday, since Friday or Monday 1st, she's filed 300 Medicare claims. So the money should start coming back in fairly quickly after that. Vehicle title fees are still holding good at $105,959. It leads us, we've set in a 67% of the revenue for the year and the budget's running at 2% under budgeted amount. I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody's got any.
Do we have any numbers yet, Terrell, on Haynes Creek?
There they are.
Which one? I can't even.
Yeah, I just changed up on, again, these are preliminary. You got to understand this park's been open for eight days and I've done this yesterday. If you look at the actual revenue, it's set at $89,151. Our expenses of yesterday was $5,051, which is about half the budgeted amount per month, which is about half a month, so that's about right. And of course, it leaves a variance of $84,100 where that revenue came from for camping fees. This is, again, changes by the hour. But as yesterday, it was $64,151. And that $25,000 is to seed money we put in that account to open it up, to have operating money until, until we get on our feet. And hopefully, we'll have a return on investment and pay that back within a couple, three years.
That's good.
Well, that's the number. And if you'll look, there's kind of a snapshot. And this, this year's in the valuation period. If you'll look, March has picked up a little bit. Our four highest months, as you see on there, is April, May, June, and July. August is kind of slower than I was expecting, and September's still a little slower. And I don't think, unless it picks up drastically for October, we probably won't be open next October. We're using this as a measuring gauge on when we need to open and when we need to close. But right now, October's looking, not looking real well. Any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer too.
Well, it's a little bit early for the call, August and October, isn't it? I mean, for.
It probably is. Again, we're averaging five, 10 reservations a day at different times. And we have them drive in, walk up, on site if I review. But that's, that's where we're standing at with Haynes Creek.
Is there any way we could put a suggestion box there so people can give us suggestions and just, you know, opportunities for improvements?
Sure. Should be very possible. You know, one of the things I would, I'd like to see on there is, you know, the operating times as far as, you know.
We'll go year round and we'll go further out. And obviously, this is a work in process, but.
Right.
At least get that feedback.
Right. I agree. Yeah, we can set up some kind of suggestion box. We can put them in the bathroom just for the bathhouses or whatever. But we'll, we'll get that set up. And I've made stops around when I've had a chance to get up there and stop and talk to people. And everybody's seemed to be satisfied right now. Most of them are repeat campers, has been there before. And it's been, you know, it's been just a small sample because, like I say, we've just been open eight days. We got a suggestion box out there.
Another point of clarification, while we're there, we haven't paid a power bill where the meters have been turning yet either.
Correct.
As far as expenses, so.
The dead power, 10 meters up there.
Right.
And, and during the non-use time, those bills are going to run around between $300 and $400 a month with nobody in that park. So that's a lot of things that's got to be caught up and paid year round, even though you're, you're just using it seasonally. So a lot of this stuff's going to have to play out in time where we can tell exactly what's going on. But we have, we have got one power bill that was, had been before the month before we opened, and it was $360, something like that. And that would have been no, no power use at all.
Right.
That's all I ask.
All right, thank you. Terrell?
I had neglected, if I might take a minute, I had intended to make a brief report on the tax sale that was held.
Yes, sir.
Last Tuesday. And as I have done in the past, I want to assure that everybody knows that Hart County does not take any joy in selling property for delinquent taxes. It is a measure of the last resort. It is only done when there are a number of years of delinquency. It is only done after multiple attempts at collection or voluntary payment. And it is only done as a last resort. But it has to be done because the way our county budget works, we expect to receive the tax revenues. And when you don't, then everybody else pays more, or at least in theory, everybody else pays more to pick up the slack. And that's why it's so important to liquidate these, at least after some period of time. And I also want to point out that when there is a bid that is in excess of the amount of the tax, some people think the county makes a lot of money, but that's not the case at all. The county, let's say $3,000 tax was owed and a bid of $33,000 was made, $3,000 goes to the county. The other 30,000 goes to the owner or any lien holder that makes a claim, but it does not stay with the county. And the specifics of it, I can tell you that I do believe that the vast majority of taxes were paid prior to the sale. There was one huge one that owed for 12 or 13 parcels and that, it was a company in Athens and they paid that morning, the morning of the sale. It was well attended. There were a lot of people there. It was spirited bidding. Everything that was still up for sale at that time was sold. And I'll answer any questions.
All right, anybody got any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Gordon, for that report. All right, Chairman's report, I know we spent a lot of time discussing the stellar act and all these things. We're trying to get Atlanta stations in here. And I have Dish Network myself, and I just noticed two Atlanta stations on my Dish programming the other day. And I don't, I don't know if there'll be any more or how long these are going to stay. But anyway, I didn't, I did not lose any of the South Carolina networks as a matter of information. You know, I don't know how long it's been on there. I just noticed it the other day, but I know some people have questioned and warning Atlanta stations. But I do not know if it's on DirecTV or not, but it is on the Dish, Dish Network to Atlanta stations. So we're going to change things up a little bit tonight under Commissioners' report. It is so unfair to, just because District 5 is further down than 1, that 5 always has to go last. So we're going to change it up and ask for any Commissioner report from District 5.
The only thing I've got is we were planning on having the open records, open meetings training for everybody who receives county funding that serves on boards and authorities, the mandatory training that we got a scheduling glitch and we're going to reschedule that.
Yeah.
That's my fault, I forgot. I wasn't going to throw that out. Well, if I do something wrong, I'll be the first to admit. But it worked out anyway because we couldn't get to the literacy center tonight anyway. But we'll reschedule probably, you want it after the next.
Let's just do it after the next meeting.
After the 23rd.
Okay.
I need to let everybody know. I mean, as they get county funds, they've got to attend.
You got that.
It's for their protection so they understand their legal responsibilities as serving as a board or authority member. If they get more than a third of their funding from a taxpayer source, then they must comply. The only other thing I've got is next weekend, Little League will have their opening day. No ceremonies or anything this year because of COVID, but they will be starting off their season next Saturday, just as F1.
All right.
That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Carter, District 4?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a few things. All right, Work Source Georgia Mountains offers opportunities for eligible, eligible individuals to improve their skills in the workforce and help employers find the right workers. We have received a grant that focuses on dislocated workers and getting them back to work in this COVID world. We currently have multiple work sites and workers fulfilling needed roles at these work sites. We want to find more eligible workers and more work sites inside our beautiful region. So any of you people out there that needs a job or you people out there that needs employees, I'm going to give you the numbers. And if we, if the newspaper wants to put that in here, I've got the information right here. It's up to y'all if we want to put it on the website. But they get some, they got some federal grants in order to do this. And I hear all the time where people's having trouble finding workers, so this might help. All right, you contact the person by the name of Nikki McPherson on the job coordinator. Information is 770-538-2734. Or you can email nmcpherson@gmarc georgia.gov. And I will put that right there for y'all to have. And I just want to make it public. And I just want to make it public.
That's what I wanted to see because you can't see it in what we've got here on eight and a half. That's why I'm asking the question.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor? It's five oh vote. And while we're on that subject, if subdivisions, I mean, I know we got 120 day moratorium going on right now. And if we could, Mr. Gordon, if you could maybe next meeting, if we could kind of give us some insight on what we can and cannot do to resolve these right away issues. I know we've discussed it quite a bit and I don't want to put you on the spot tonight, but we need to do something for that 120 days. So I appreciate that.
What I was planning on putting together is what we did at the last meeting, where if we get the extra 15 foot, we just grant variance.
That's good.
I mean, to me, that was the solution to the moratorium. That was fair. It worked out, was a win-win for both sides and it kept the land on our hole. And it kept the county whole.
But the other side, yeah, I agree with that. But on the other side of the road, if it's already developed and we can't get the other 15 foot.
Right.
I mean, all we can we go and get the them at that time. I just wondered if.
I was looking at from a standpoint of approving the subdivision as we get it. Like these that are coming, you know, they're needing approval for us. We get it on that side. We may not ever get it on the other. That's strictly going to be up to them. But when I did the moratorium, that was what I was looking at. This is an opportunity to try to bargain to get additional right of way. If we had 45 foot or whatever, you know, you got a lot more room than 30 or 20 foot wide ditch to ditch area, especially for emergency services. But I'll put something together from.
I appreciate that because I think we need to get something going so we can have our first and second and third reading before this moratorium is up. So because it's kind of, you know, we wasted a bunch of people's time if we don't get anything accomplished. So I appreciate that, Commissioner Dorsey and Ms. Gordon. Next on the agenda is the discussion of House Bill 496 and Senate Bill 118. And Commissioner Dorsey asked for this to be on the agenda, so I'll turn the floor over to him this time.
There's a couple of bills, one House bill, one Senate bill. Neither one made it through crossover, crossover day to move forward. So both of them, one is stalled out in committee and the other one never got anywhere. But I still think that we need to take a position on this because there's no guarantees that a current bill on transportation that's made it through crossover day can't be amended to add this language in there. So that's where my concern is. Senate Bill 118 would allow logging trucks to run up to 100,000 pounds on secondary roads. Currently, it's 80,000 pounds on a five axle truck with a 5% variance. So they can go up to 84,000 pounds. This change would allow them to go up to 100,000 pounds. There's multiple issues here. Loggers, believe it or not, they don't have to keep log books. They don't have to do hours of service. They can legally drive 24 hours a day, seven days a week. A lot of the equipment that they drive is not fleet maintained like a lot of the other commercial carriers. If you look at data that I got from the Commercial Motor Carrier Division, Mr. Jeremy Vickery, the commanding officer, these logging trucks are more than two times, it was about 220% of the time, have a higher citation or violation rate than a normal commercial carrier. Some of it may be as simple as a light bulb being out or whatever the case may be. But it's clearly a situation that the data shows there's a safety problem. The other part to this is the road infrastructure in Hart County and every other county is not built to handle these kind of trucks and this kind of loading. You go out here, we've got bridges that are, you know, rated 25,000 pounds. The last thing we need is 100,000 pound truck going across those things. And when you look at where these logging activities take place, they typically don't take place on state highways. Most of them are on secondary roads. You know, the interstate system will not allow them to run 80,000 pounds. I'm not saying this had anything to do with it, but we just had a fatality last week with a logging truck that overturned in a sharp curve. Unfortunately, it's a safety issue. And I'm going to make a motion that we draft a letter. I'll be happy to write it if the board sees fit or work with Terrell or have Terrell write it. But we need to go on record. The ACCG is on record opposing this. And this just goes to show you that the special interest during Atlanta too. But the ones that's going to profit from this will be the logging companies that the taxpayers expense because there's no way we can continue to maintain roads that weren't built for this kind of weight limit. So I'm going to put that in the form of a motion that we send a letter to our state representative, Alan Powell, our state Senator Lee Anderson, and the sponsors of both of these bills taking our position on this.
I'll give you a second.
And I want to commend Kathleen Bowen from ACCG for the efforts that they've taken to fight this as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dorsey. You heard a motion from Commissioner Dorson. We've got a second from Commissioner Carter. Any discussion?
Yeah, when I read these laws, the old part of the laws, they exempt cotton, tobacco, concrete pipe, forest products and plywood. I don't understand why things is exempted.
It should be the same for everybody.
Yeah, I agree with that. It should be the same for everybody. When I read that, I said, man, why would they do that? Of course plywood is a forest product. It's kind of funny how both of them got the annual forest product permit. House bill is 1,000 and the Senate bill is 200. They're not quite together on the permit price.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Next on our agenda is 13D. This is our archway and Ms. Rosanna Cruz Bibb will be giving us a presentation at this time. We'll give her the floor.
Well, good evening. So as you said, my name is Rosanna Cruz Bibb and I have been with the Archway Partnership for nine years, I think now. But I've been specifically with Hart County since December of 2019. As your interim archway professional, I think you all hopefully have met Anna Strickland before me. And then I was serving in the interim role until this past December when I started full time with you guys. So just wanted to come tonight and say thank you so much for your partnership and your willingness to work together with us for so many years. And then hopefully we can continue doing awesome work together. So, I mean, I certainly don't have to go in depth on archway. I think all of you probably know a good deal about archway. But across the state, really what our role from the University of Georgia is to help you guys address the needs that you see that you want to work on. And so my job is certainly not to come in and say, these are the things you need to work on. I help bring university resources to meet the needs that you guys say that you want to work on. So this really is a graphic is to show that you guys started working with us in 2008. So you are one of our longest running communities, the only one on that list from 2008 that's still with us outside of you guys is Washington County. The other ones have since graduated. But we have had, I mean, such a wonderful partnership with the Hart community and everyone that we've worked with. So we've just been so lucky and blessed to continue working here and hopefully that will continue into the future as well. This is just a map that shows you in red the communities that we're in across the state and the coupons are ones that have graduated. But then, you know, it gives you a little bit of information about basically my role and how I work with the executive committee and then also community members and issue work groups in your community to basically hear the needs that you guys are talking about and then help to bring resources to address those things. Okay, and so partnership benefits, you have access to higher education resources. The projects that you guys choose to work on are related to specific priority areas that are identified by you and your community. And then faculty on our end have access to communities so that they can do research and provide assistance on local and regional issues. So really on so many different fronts, we have benefits. And then for our students, it's really exciting too because when they get to come up here, especially because you guys are our closest community to Athens, they get to come and they get to see real world projects and things that otherwise outside of the classroom, they wouldn't get that experience. So all the way around, it's a really positive experience for our faculty, our students, and then hopefully for you guys as well.
Oh, that was fast talking right there. My ears, you ain't pick that up that fast.
Play it for us.
Yeah, that's fine. So these are the four priorities that you guys had designated during our last work planned time. So preparing for growth, tourism, quality of life, and then workforce development, education. So any of the projects that the executive committee chooses to work on, they fall under one of these four categories. So anything that we, you know, devote resources to has to fall under one of those four things. And so the one pager that is available, I think Terrell had put in your packets and then I have more if anyone wants to see them. This is sort of a synopsis of the past year. And I have three projects that I'm going to highlight and just talk about a little bit here, but we certainly have more and I would be happy to have individual meetings with you guys or if you want to talk more, ask questions, that's great. But the one, the big one was the jail site feasibility study. And then our students also did a cost analysis of how much a jail would cost for you guys. So this is a picture of some of the engineering students when they were doing the work out at the site. And this was super exciting for them. They're all incredibly bright kids and this was a really nice real world experience for them. So when they go out into the job market, they can say that they were actually working with a real life client. So for them, it was wonderful and hopefully it provided a benefit for you guys as well. This one was a really fun project between the College of Education and Hart County High School. And this was really, it was a conference first of all, but then we also ended up creating this guidebook. It was a conference that ended up basically for students to see what can I do after high school. So we had people talk about if you want to join the military, if you do want to go to college, what does financial aid look like? If you don't want to go to college, maybe here are some industries that you could look at or if you wanted to go to technical school, whatever that may be, that your students were prepared to be able to, you know, tackle life after high school. Just lost because that can be a risk as well. So it was a conference for that evening. And then there was also the guidebook that came out of that. That's here, why do we need to now available around for kids around the community to figure out, you know, that next big step after high school. And then this one is still ongoing actually, but in, at the end of 2019, the beginning of 2020, we had done three different regional tourism roundtables between Stevens, Franklin and Hart County. And it was really, really exciting to see everything happening. And then of course COVID hit after we had our September meeting. So that was a little bit anticoagulant. But we have continued working and actually we're going to be doing a Georgia grown virtual webinar on March 23rd, I think. And that's a product of this working group, basically. A lot of the farmers and businesses have said that they were interested in Georgia grown and potentially creating a Georgia grown trail amongst the three communities. And so toward that end, they were asking a lot of questions about, you know, what is Georgia grown? What might the benefits of membership be? How can we, you know, become part of this? What does that mean? And so from that, we are going to be meeting with Cheryl Smith from the Georgia Department of Agriculture. And we're holding a Q and A session with her so that businesses and farmers can ask her questions to decide if they want to become a Georgia grown member or how that membership might benefit them. And questions about trails would probably be further down the line. But this is just one example of the work that's been going on between the three communities, or three counties, I should say. That's again. So that's sort of in a nutshell, just three small projects. The one pager that you have is more in depth and certainly if you want more information, I would be happy to meet with you. If you have questions now, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Any questions?
Yeah. On the jail feasibility study, they made one presentation on that here. They were left out, given a charge from here to go back and read it. And they came back with the report. But with the situation, they couldn't come give a in-person report on it. Now I do have the written report and I looked at it and I use it to kind of gauge what we're doing with the jail now. So there was use in it. And the kids, the students, I say kids, the students worked very hard in it and they were serious about it.
And certainly, you know, post-COVID, our students are still not traveling right now. But post-ELDIS craziness that's happening, you know, we would hope to. now, but post-ELDIS craziness that's happening, you know, we would hope to have our students back traveling once again, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got, I got some, and I have mentioned this before to other people, not you, but, you know, a lot of stuff y'all do, we never really hear any information about. I mean, except when we get this, and to me, I'm going to look over one right here, this cyber security summit. I don't know what the outcome of that would, but, you know, if we done that for this reason, and I'd like to sort of, I ain't talking about have a 50-page report or nothing like that. I'm talking about just what was the outcome and stuff like that. Poverty tax force, I've actually asked for this before, and I still haven't ever got any information on it. Workplace health and wellness study, informational housing flyers, stuff like it, I would like to see. Nobody else may not, but, you know, we putting money in, and I'd like to see it, and I don't want you to take this the wrong way, though. I really appreciate what y'all do, but I'd just like to know some more information on some of the things, and I've asked that before. And also on page three of five, it says co-partner, it don't say Hart Partners. And remember, I don't understand, and so, you know, you might want to update that.
Okay, we'll certainly check in and make any needed edits.
To my knowledge, it's been, the balance of projects is not evenly weighted by the formula distribution. If we're going to continue to be one of the top funding partners, we need to get the same level of service that others are getting, and that means us getting projects together and that kind of thing. This was supposed to be a short-term program when this was sold to us. I mean, I know we have one of the longest-running ones in the state, and I have no problem with that, but I just see, from a funding source, I see that the projects that are county-based are dropping year after year after year after year, but our funding level is staying the same. Don't take that the wrong way. I mean, that comes from this group here. That's who I'm talking about up here. We, if we're going to continue to fund it at this level, we need to get the return on our investment for what we're finding. That's just my thoughts.
Part of that could be, you know, what are we, when do we ever ask for anything, or what do we, you know?
That's what I'm talking about. I mean, we're not giving them the project work that they need. I'm not being critical of archway.
That's right. I just want to make that clear, that, you know, it may be as much our fault because we're not requesting the services. Just to be clear on what Commissioner Dorsey's talking about, Hart County Board of Commissioners give $12,000. The City of Hartwell gives $12,000. Hart County Board of Education gives $12,000. The Hart County Industrial Building Authority gives $5,000. Hart County Chamber of Commerce gives $4,000. Telephone Company gives $5,000. So that's your fees, that's your ratios there of what, which each entity donates to the archway partnership. And, you know, I know they were involved in the playground when we set up the playground out there at the new park, and it was very successful, and it really looks good out there, all the planning and development that went on there. We had a playground committee that worked hard along with the leadership of Elka, and she done a real fine job. And, you know, and after we done that and we got involved with the jail, there really hasn't been anything else we've asked for.
Let me add a few things that they have done that y'all may or may not be aware of. All the long-range plans, archway does them. That's for recreation department, fire department, roads they haven't worked on. I haven't had anybody here to do roads, we do now. They could certainly help shadow out with a road plan. But now, they did a lot of work on the recreation department, and especially with the fire department. They, and that's where they come in on the irons. I mean, we don't have that many big projects. The jail was one thing. That's kind of a once-in-a-long-time thing. And if you, they done a lot of work for John when he was here on the industrial parks, design, entryway design, stuff like, we haven't had any projects like yet in the last couple of years to warrant it. I could probably come up with some stuff. I just hate to see them do work for nothing if it's not a, something we actually have to have. I'd be glad to address them with anything y'all come up with, any projects y'all think in the back of your mind or more of it. But they do do, if nothing else, the long-range planning and updating those plans every so many years that have to be updated is certainly a big benefit to us. If they didn't do the work, we would have to, myself or somebody would have to sit down and do all that work too.
One thing I would like to see is an archway project, and this would be through the Terry College of Business, is have all of our job descriptions updated. Yeah, that would be a good project. It really would. I mean, if you human resource folks, that would be an excellent project because our job descriptions are outdated. I think that would be one that we ought to pursue because it'd make it easier on all of us. And there's others, I mean, I'm just, like I said, I'm not being critical. I just want to make sure we're getting, we're getting our bank on our butt. These long-range plans are not done necessarily every year, but that's one that we can do. There's others, and we, as a board, really need to think about that and let's utilize this resource that we're paying for.
Okay.
I can come up with several.
Can I get a motion to?
Good projects. Because I can come up with several good projects. There's two on my mind, and it would meet the workforce development on one of them.
There's already, I would think we could get you on that workforce committee if you want to be on that committee. They meet regularly now.
Well, I would like to see a project done that suits it, and I could come to the meeting and explain it to you if I saw it, as long as you let me know when the meeting is.
Yeah, I don't know when the next meeting's scheduled, but I'd be glad to have to let you know.
Could we get a motion to adopt this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt it, but I want you really take serious, letting us know the information.
Please.
I'm talking about just short stuff. I ain't talking about 50 pages or something.
Email updates are fine.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
But I would like for us to consider to, you know, if, rather than each of us carrying a project to archway, I would rather speak collectively in agreement with each project.
Yeah, I mean, it had to go through the board.
It had to go through the board, and it had to go through the executive committee of archway, which I'm a member of, and all the major contributors are members of that board. It had to go through that board.
Okay. Can I get a motion? You make a motion, Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, do you?
Okay, we got a second, but Commissioner Dorsey, any other discussion? All in favor? Five oh vote. Thank you, Ms. Bibb Cruz.
I want you to know, I really do appreciate what y'all done. I appreciate you coming up here and talking, doing tonight.
All right. 13A, permission to bid recreation football uniforms?
No moves.
Okay, we got a commission by, got a motion by Commissioner Carter for permission of recreation football uniforms. Do I have a second?
Second.
We got a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion?
What value is this now? I mean, I'm just asking.
It is early.
You don't even know how many you're going to have participate.
Well, we'll start the process to bid, it probably will go out for another couple of weeks.
Football season's still four months away, five months away.
Yeah, well, this, for whatever reason, this is the time of year we bid them every year. Start the process anyway.
Well, we had a heck of a discussion last year about the amount of people playing.
Well, also last year, we combined this and basketball together. I don't think that's a wise thing to do either.
It didn't work.
That's up to you. We can wait. If you want to wait, we can wait, but.
Me ahead of curve.
Price changes, that's the problem.
We're not going to bid it.
I wouldn't drop my second.
That's mine.
We're not going to send them out until the middle of April.
Okay.
Just waiting to dress the team.
That's no good, mate. I wouldn't drop my second.
So no action tonight? Did you withdraw the motion?
Yeah, I withdrew.
Okay. So we'll just take no action tonight.
We'll bring it back in April.
Yeah. All right. Next on the agenda is 13F, proposed amendment to beer and wine ordinance for special events. And I've asked Mr. Gordon if he would take the floor at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to point out that what we sent you in the board notebook had been revised with what was passed out tonight. The one in the board notebook said unproved draft. I wanted to get it in in time for a revision to y'all, but at that time, I had not been able to review it. This one that was passed out to you tonight is the current version and has been subject to review. Basically, what this does is it follows a model that the, is very similar to that of the City of Hartwell. It applies only to beer and wine, and it does allow for nonprofit organizations to sponsor events that may contain as a part of that, the consumption of beer and wine. And it is fairly restrictive in that it only allows for a one- or a two-day event at a time, and no more than four such events in a year by the same operator. And the rest is fairly self-explanatory. It talks about how they will specify the location of the event and the hours in which it will occur, and it gives you pretty broad discretion in whether or not you approve the applicant, so, or approve the application. I do believe that it's ready now in this current draft for you to accept on a perjury basis.
One, I have a question before we can get to this point. In the event somebody has served, will these nonprofits be responsible if somebody served too much and then something happens?
The law would take care of that, and the immediate or direct answer is yes. Now that, I can tell you that suing a nonprofit entity is not a, most nonprofit entities don't have any assets, so it may be a futile gesture. Many, and I think probably most, do have some type of event insurance. Usually, something like that is designed to pay your cost if it rains and nobody comes to the event. I don't know that a policy like that confers any kind of liability coverage, but the answer to the question, I mean, if they over-serve, if they serve people who are noticeably intoxicated, and then that person or persons cause injury or death to another, then they can be made liable.
What about just a volunteer of the group? Would they fall under, or could they be personally?
I don't believe that the volunteer could be personally. I mean, now, they could be sued, okay? I do want to stress that, anybody with a tight rider, a filing fee can sue somebody, but I don't think that they would remain in, as long as they didn't, you know, as long as they were acting under the organization and didn't go rogue or something.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I got a few. Why is it that only nonprofits can do this? Is there some reason for that law?
Not really. The thinking there was that you don't want every single group there is in Hart County to do it, okay? And for the most part, what we've seen is when there are special events, like concerts or dances, that kind of thing, like they've had in the city, that it typically is a nonprofit group or a civic group that is the sponsor of it. I don't know that you, I mean, we can, you can, you can, we can rewrite this so that it could be open to private entities, but I don't, I wouldn't, unless you really insist on that, I don't think I'd recommend it.
Well, I was sort of concerned why only nonprofits can do it because, you know, other people sell beer that's not nonprofit, so, and wine. All right, on number two here, it says investigate the circumstance of the proposed wine tasting event or sale of malt beverages or wine, and upon completion of the investigation, shall present the application to the BOC for consideration. The board shall be authorized to deny the permit or issue the permit, subject to such terms and conditions as the board deemed in the public interest. If you investigating, should we not have in there what you're going to be investigating? I mean, what is?
It's part of the application process.
It's basically the totality of the circumstances, you know? If you had, I presume you might could have a, I don't want to really single anybody out, but there are conceivably some nonprofit groups that you may not want to have, may not want to license to have this ability, you know, if there was a motorcycle gang. You know, I mean, there are things, there are entities that, that need to be considered, and you really have to consider all the circumstances. That's why there's no specific bright-line rule. I mean, we can do that if you prefer, but what, the wording of it now gives both the administrator and the board substantial discretion in whether or not to grant or deny. You know, you don't really have that in the beer and wine ordinance itself. If an applicant meets all the qualifications, then you will give them a license. I mean, that's just that simple. This one gives you more discretion than that, and would allow you to provide the license or not.
Well, I just like things to be clear. It's, you know, it's not really clear to me of what could we use as reasoning to deny somebody.
Well, there would, I could come up with several, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it throughout the next two weeks, if you like, but there are, I can see that there are certain circumstances where you may not wish to do that, and we'll talk about it at some point. I don't, I don't want to, the reason I'm hedging on it, I don't really want to offend anybody, you know, in your listening audience that may be thinking they're going to have a big beer bash and get their license from you.
All right.
I got some more. Why are we limiting it to two days? Is that, is that normal?
Most festivals operate for either one or two days on a weekend.
Oh, that's pretty good.
That's why, I mean, if it came to pass that there were something that were, an event that lasted for a longer period of time, you could certainly, I think under this ordinance, you could waive that and provide that time slot, and you might want to amend the ordinance at that time, but I doubt if that will occur.
Right now, why are we going to limit it to four per year? That's eight days out of a year.
Purely discretion. Purely discretion, purely your discretion. I mean, we can make it 50 times a year, but I don't think it'd be, I don't think that would be wise. There's no magic in that number of four, okay?
That's what I would ask.
And in fact, I would, I would, I think fairly reasonably guess or assume that it's probably not going to happen but once a year with any given group, really.
Okay.
But it would allow you to do it up to four times, but there's no magic in the number four.
All right, any other discussion?
I see, I didn't see any fees in here for these permits. Who determines these fees there? I mean, there's got to be fees.
Y'all will determine the fees. What we have, Commissioner, is a separate ordinance that sets fees, and we will throw it, we will throw an appropriate fee into that ordinance. What that does is it allows you to amend the fee structure more frequent, well, more easily than amending every law that has a fee in it. You can just review the fee structure ordinance and change it around, you know, at will.
Well, there should be some kind of guidelines to the magnitude of the event as far as the fees, wouldn't you?
Perhaps so. I can tell you that the city assesses a $50 a fee. You know, the idea being that there's no, especially given it's a nonprofit group, there's no real, there really shouldn't be any great motivation for the county to profit from the event, you know, like with a $1,000 license fee.
I guess I'm assuming that this would be like the, some of the jet ski events.
That's a good possibility, yeah.
Stuff like this where there's thousands of people out in the county, county property, etc., and so forth, so.
The problem you're going to have there is core property. If you've got an event like that, that's going to be one of the questions I've got, is the core property, alcoholic beverages are prohibited, is that not a fact?
That is correct, and you'll note that number five, I think I've covered that, that no permit will be issued unless the sale of malt beverages is lawful for the place for which the permit is issued, rather than making a blanket ban on federal property. That's what it says, and if there were ever a change in the federal rule, you know, that would be flexible enough to cover it. But, you know, this, you cannot trump, the actions of this board cannot govern what takes place on federal level. And if they have that rule, and I believe they do, then, you know, your permitting will not make a difference.
Let me ask you a question. At the end of old 29 down there, that's the lease that the county has.
That's right.
Is it considered federal property?
It is federal property. I've never really researched that one, because that one, just like Paines Creek, it's federal property. So technically, it is covered by all the federal rules. However, it is no longer operated by the federal government, it's operated by the county. And there may be, there may be some wiggle room there. I've never really researched the issue, but I don't know.
I think we need to know the answer to that, though, because that's going to come up.
I agree.
The last thing we'd want to do is have the core council lease because of...
Oh, yeah. Well, I can tell you right now that, without going any further, that that concern is warranted, and I just wouldn't issue a license if somebody wants to do something on one of the federal park properties. I just wouldn't do it if I were you. And that's where you rely on the county administrator to say, well, you can't really do it here.
So item number two pretty much covers this, whether we give these people a permit or not.
Oh, yeah. It's discretionary, purely discretionary. It's, there is no entitlement, there is no entitlement to beer and wine license.
Well, I don't really see a problem, as long as we can say, yeah, you're there anytime you want.
Right, and you can.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I got one more thing to say, and I'll be quiet. I know y'all proud to hear that. This is one part of this beer and wine ordinance, but there's many more parts we need to do.
Yes.
And I think it's time for us to do it.
Why don't you mark up what changes you want to make, bring it back forward board?
I agree. I do think that, for a couple of reasons, it's timely now to go ahead and consider either adopting this or not. I would not, you know, at one point, there was some talk about incorporating something like this in an overall revision of the ordinance. I think it's, you're going to miss some opportunities, and it would be better to go ahead and adopt this, and then on a parallel track, be looking at the whole thing. Because what we really need to do, to go one step further, is we really need to incorporate into that ordinance our separate provisions on liquor, consumption of liquor. In my concept, you would have a single ordinance that would encompass all alcohol and beverage.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and move on this, but, you know, I wasn't thinking about waiting. I want to go ahead and move on this to get it done, but, because we've been needing this a long time.
So you make a motion for this to be the first reading?
First reading.
Okay. All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Carter. We'll take this as the first reading of the ordinance amendment section 6-47. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I do have future revisions that I want to discuss in the second reading.
Okay. We got a second by Commissioner Dorsey. And sure, there's room for revisions and stuff up until the third and final reading.
There is, no question.
Right, right, so. All right, any other discussion? Any discussion from the public? All right, if not, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor? Five of them. Yep, all right. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone that would like to come to the podium and tell us what's on your mind? Or tell us what's on somebody else's mind? We do appreciate y'all's patience tonight. I know it's been kind of a long meeting, but some of these things warrant the discussion that we have, and sometimes it takes a little while, but we do appreciate your patience tonight. If nothing else, going to get a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
We got a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Let's take it to a vote. All in favor? It's five of them. Thank you.